How are you?
Good.
My name is Jeffrey Simon. I'm representing my company, Circle Incorporated, and myself. The city recently passed a zoning-
Have an address, please?
I'm sorry, what?
Address, your home address.
1312 Gwynmill Drive, Opelika, Alabama, 36801.
Thank you.
So I'm here to address the concern I have regarding these new changes in zoning along the West Glen Avenue. They've raised the requirement that property facing the street requires a 15-foot ceiling height related to some commercial development that I don't think is actually usable.
Are you addressing a specific item that we have here tonight?
Well, I'm addressing a concern for myself.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, carry on.
Is there a problem?
No, it sounds familiar that I thought we had, we have another one that's on the agenda about East Glen and something that's going on there.
Well, this is my address because I own a lot of land down there.
Okay.
Doesn't have anything to do with anybody's development.
Okay, okay.
So you've got a 15-foot requirement for commercial space along the street, but I think this is completely arbitrary and capricious. I want to see the nexus that came from the director that ties this to some profitable venture for the developers because it affects all my land. And I'm worried about it because it'll affect the value of my property, too, and it's a substantial amount of property down there, other than capstone. And I'm worried that this whole concept does not work. I need to see it to see as profitable for anybody approaching me about my land that I can say, "This will work for you," because I know there's foot traffic down there, but it's not in a general area like downtown Auburn where they have committed to have commercial space under these buildings they've built, but they all, some of them are just completely vacant. And it bothers me that it would depreciate the value of my property, and I need answers.
Okay, have you approached the city planning department on this issue?
Well, I was hoping the assistant director would be here today to talk to me.
Well, I would, I would suggest the first thing that would be useful would be to come and see the city planning director, the acting director, and start with the dialogue at that point. And then there are, you know, processes we can go through to, to address it more formally if there's a need to change any of the ordinances or anything like that. There's a whole process to do that.
Well, I appreciate you taking time to hear me, but it is an important issue for me and probably other developers down in that same area.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Simon, if you'd like to come by the office tomorrow or call the office tomorrow, I'm at an apartment.
It would be next week, I'll be out of town.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Wayne Holler. My family owns property at 579 Railroad Avenue, which is, abuts the property that Mr. Simon was just talking about. And I guess my concern, we have a home there, and we came to the planning meeting when you approved those seven lots, consolidating them into one. They completely surround our property. And so I'm, I'm really concerned from, as the property owner, about having commercial right behind us in an area like that where I don't see that they're going to get a very good draw for their commercial business. And I think, I'm not sure how they go about changing the zoning. Is there supposed to be a public hearing when they're going to change zoning for an area like that?
Yes, there are.
We certainly weren't notified of any public hearing. We were notified of the public hearing when you were consolidating those seven lots, but we were never notified about the, of the public hearing for the rezoning of that whole area to downtown. And I don't understand how that can happen without letting the residents who live there, and there are several private homes in that, you know, just one block or two of that thing, that area, too.
All affected properties are notified by, that's part of the process.
We weren't-
So how it, what, what actually happened is, we'd have to look into.
It was a text, text amendments.
For the land use, okay. Well, maybe that might be another thing to come talk to one of the planners to kind of understand exactly what happened, and then we can take steps, you know, beyond that.
Okay. Well, this is number 25 on your agenda tonight, according to the tracks. So that's why I was speaking to them, because it does affect us, what you decide to do there.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, let's move on. There's no old business. And the first order of business is the consent agenda. We've had a couple of different applicants come forward and ask us to postpone a number of these, of the issues that we'll be addressing tonight, and a couple of them show up on the consent agenda. So the first order of business I would like to do is make a motion to remove two different, well, start with one with, the first item's going to be item number two, which is the KEAL annexation, PL 2021-00367. And this has been asked by the applicant to be postponed until a date certain, 9 September. Is that the correct date?
That is correct.
2021?
Correct.
So do I have a second to postpone? Motion in a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Okay, that's removed from the consent agenda. The second one that we want to, okay, that's the only one. So this, now we're going to go on and talk about the number three. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, the Ernest Annexation is the second one we want to remove from the consent agenda. This is PL 2021-00371. And so I also make a motion to remove this from the consent agenda and postpone it until a date certain of 8 September 2021.
August, did they request August or September?
August 12th.
Oh, the bottle, okay, that's the bottle, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll revise that motion and say that we're going to remove it from the consent agenda and postpone it until a date certain, 12 August 2021.
Second.
Motion in the second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, so now we'll address the remainder of the consent agenda. That will be the Thomas Annexation, which is PL 2021-00344. The Chandler Annexation, PL 2021-00385. And Piper Glen Phase 2, PL 2021-00384.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move on the approval of the, those three items on the consent agenda, plus the minutes of the packing meeting in June of 7th and our regular meeting in June of 10th.
Second.
Have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, so let's move on to new business. And what I would like to do is take care of these other items that want to be postponed. So the first one would be item number 10, which is the KEAL rezoning, PL 2021-00365. Make a motion to postpone until a date certain of 8 September 2021.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. The next item would be item number 11, the Bottle, CDD, PL 2021-00369. This request by the applicant to postpone until a date certain of 8, 12 August 2021. That's a, that's a motion.
Second.
Okay, have a motion in a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number 12, Bottle, DHD, PL 2021-00372. Applicant has requested postponed until a date certain, until August 12, 2021, is the motion.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number 13, the Bottle, PDD. The applicant, this is a motion that the applicant would like to postpone, PL 2021-00368, until a date certain, 12 August 2021.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number 14, the Bottle. This is a conditional use approval, also by, the applicant has requested that it be postponed. This is a PL 2021-00370. The applicant has requested postponed until a date certain, 12 August 2021.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. I think that is it.
One other item, Phil failed to mention that item 24, Project Lakeview, has been withdrawn.
Okay, withdrawn completely.
What do we do with that, 2 and 3 now? 2 and 3, we moved them off the consent agenda.
I had made the motions to move them off the consent agenda and postpone.
And postpone? Very good, thank you very much.
Okay, let me get back to where we're starting here. So now we're back, let's start from what we have left here. Item number six, which is the Highway 280 Focus Area Study Text Amendment. This is PL 2021-00340. There's all, a whole bunch of people working on this one. You want to present, Mr. Kip?
The, I'll kind of run through the slides here. The text amendments reflect changes or amendments to the Comp Plan 2030 that essentially summarize the U.S. Highway 280 Focus Area Study results. You can find that language in your staff report and available on the website as well. But I'll run through mostly the, the map amendments, since that's kind of the more visual component to this. Focus Area Studies, just for anyone that is not familiar with them, are essentially neighborhood or corridor-based studies that we look at the future land use designation of the properties. The future land use designation in our Comp Plan is not the same thing as the zoning district. The zoning, which people are more familiar with, is, you know, what can you do with your property now, what are the rules and requirements for your property, whereas the future land use designation is looking long-term to 2030. You know, what are the most appropriate types of uses that, that could go there along U.S. Highway 280? A lot of the property's in the county, but we worked with lots of different stakeholders and property owners to develop this proposal. There's about 310 property owners in that study area, so we mailed postcards to all of them, invited them to come in and speak with staff, and we hosted a virtual open house. This was during the COVID pandemic, so there was a little bit of a challenge to get people in person, but we did the best we could, and for, for the participation we got, we felt that it was appropriate. We met with city, or we spoke with city councilors, like I said, property owners, the university, Lee County Highway Department, City of Opelika Planning, and then, of course, all our internal departments in looking at infrastructure, new development, capital improvements in the area. A virtual open house was held on August of 2020. We had 35 attendees. We had a, the first work session with the Planning Commission in April of this year, so not too long ago. And we are now presenting this, these proposed amendments, text and map amendments, to you all for your recommendation to city council. Looking at the area, there's some strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. One of the greatest things about the area is that it has good accessibility and proximity to both jurisdictions. Some of the weaknesses that we found in the area are that it is predominantly in the county, and then another chunk of the land is within, are owned by the university. So those two jurisdictions, we do not have authority to implement zoning in, but we do have the ability to designate a future land use for them. This is the, an aerial image of the study area. The boundary of the study area is in red. It goes towards Birmingham this, this way and towards Opelika down here. We've got some landmarks, such as the Aldott Facility, Plainsman Hills, the old rest area, Auburn University property, Tuscany Hills, Ashton Lakes, and what was recently approved as Farmville Lakes. The area in blue is the current city limits. The white area is unincorporated Lee County, where again, there is no zoning in place. And the gray area represents the City of Opelika boundary. As I said, the majority of the property's in the county, but about 38% is in the city limits currently. 62%, or about 1,500 acres, are in the county. Here is some demographic information about the area. It's not a lot of rooftops, and it's majority vacant. So about 16% of the land is owned by the university. You do have some agricultural, commercial support uses, and a little bit of open space recreation of the residential uses. It's predominantly single-family, and as I stated, the vast majority of the land is currently vacant or undeveloped. Here is the current future land use. This is the, what's in the Comp Plan currently. And as I said, this is a recommending document, so it's not the same thing as the zoning of the property, but most of the land is currently designated as 280 Corridor Reserve, which is a placeholder that was put in place in 2011, essentially designating the property as to be determined, or, you know, we will look at it when we get to a future, or a Focus Area Study. Parts of the study area that were not in the original boundary include this area here, down in here, some of the single-family lots in here, and this area here. The, the study area was expanded to include those mainly because some of the uses on the ground today didn't match what the future land use says they should be, so. We conducted a online survey for about two months where we solicited input from residents in the study area and asked them to fill out a quick survey and drop a pin where they felt different types of development should occur. A lot of the folks wanted to see more recreational opportunities in the area. There was a lot, kind of a consensus for commercial in this kind of node between North College and 280. A lot of folks in existing single-family developments wanted it to pretty much stay that way. And this is the proposed, I'll just jump back real quick to the current, and this is the proposed. We'll start here. So the, this is on the north, northwest kind of quadrant of the, of the, of the study area. We're proposing most of it to remain rural. You do have some lots in here that are less than three acres currently, so staff's recommending that designate, to be designated as limited residential, which allows one-acre lots, which are what they are now. After a lot of discussion, we are including a 300-foot corridor protection zone along all the property owned by the university. Again, the city has no ability to regulate university-owned property, but we can put a, this protection zone on there to let potential buyers of land know that we would be looking at it more in depth if it's owned privately. Going up along Heath Road, a lot of this property in here is currently legally nonconforming. They are acre, zone rural, but less than three acres. As such, we're recommending the future land use to be limited residential, which would make those properties conforming. And down in here, you have some, there's a, I believe, an auto salvage yard, a church, and some other commercial support and office-type uses. That's being proposed to be low, medium-intensity mixed use. And moving southeast, we do recognize that there's a demand or a potential for a commercial node to be located here, so we've designated a lot of these parcels as gateway commercial and gateway corridor commercial, which allows commercial uses, or which could allow commercial uses. And the remaining lands to be designated as low-density residential. Moving further southeast, a lot of the lands just being recommended to be designated as rural. We do have another potential commercial node at the intersection of Farmville and 280, or across the street from Farmville Lakes. And getting towards the limits of the study, we recognize there was a lot of large undeveloped land here, highlighting the need to have a study done and designate this property. A lot of this property is undeveloped, but under a common ownership, so these are 100-plus acre land parcels that do have the ability to connect to sewer if they were annexed in, and water as well, so those kind of represent a little bit of a threat to development occurring too soon. So staff's recommending master plan mixed use on those properties so that if they do request to come into the city, they would be asked to come in as a planned development.
Would that be at annexation?
At annexation, correct. Or if, if they request a rezoned, anything-
Other than the rural?
We would want it to, yep. And a planned development requires them come before this, this commission and-
So not necessarily annexation, but at any rezoning?
Any rezoning, yep. And that's all I have for the slides here, but any questions? And for anyone in the, in the audience that needs a copy of this or wants to discuss or have any questions, we're happy to meet with anyone.
I would just like to clarify for the record that when we talk about the future land use, we're not actually rezoning anyone's property.
Correct.
This would be at the request of the property owner.
That's right.
And that's in the county that requests annexation would come in as a rural piece of property.
Correct.
And would have to request a rezoning.
That's right.
So this is not us rezoning anybody's.
A plan for the future.
Correct.
Okay, so we basically covered two different items here. Hold on one sec, we'll, we'll open a public hearing here in just a minute, and you can come right on up. I just wanted to make the point that we kind of covered two items. One was the, both of them applied to the, to 280 Corridor Focus Area Study. One item was the text amendments, and one is the land use, and you kind of spent most of the time there on the land use. So, but we're, we're going to have to deal with them separately. So what I'd like to do first is, is it appropriate to have a public hearing that covers both?
I would do two.
Do two separate ones? Okay, so we're going to talk about the text amendment, amendments first. And so at this time, and the text amendments basically incorporate what we just talked about into the comprehensive plan. And so that's the first item of business. And then the next item of business, when we get to the next item, we'll be talking about the land use that we specified, and so we'll have, and we'll have to adopt them separately, vote for them separately. So the first one, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on PL 2021-00340, which is the U.S. Highway 280 Corridor Focus Area Study Comp Plan 2030 Text Amendments. Would anybody like to come forward and speak on that? If you have a question, you can come on forward and do that.
Okay, my name's Ann Priester Bennett. I live at 7,001 Stonewall Road, Opelika. I live in the area in the little green stripes, which will be affected by what you're doing. And I came tonight to speak on items 2, 6, 7, and 10 on the agenda, which y'all have adjusted a little bit, so all of it kind of is relevant, though, and so I did want you to be aware, I'm the one with my husband who sent you background information on the nonconforming lots that are there on Heath Road. As it said, we've had 20 nonconforming lots put into our rural zone, and I want to emphasize it is a rural zone out there, as you said, fairly unpopulated, large areas, county, et cetera. The 11 annexations that you did provided a de facto transition zone, and that's what you're looking at putting into this area. You were looking at designating it as a de facto large residential area. And so I am here to oppose the addition of that behind the nonconforming lots that y'all have already approved. We have a transition zone. We do not need to have a designation for the future for that area. All you're doing is adding a lot more lots to this area for no purpose based on your stated reason to have a transition area, which is to provide a space between what is already rural and what's being developed. It's there. You did it already in the previous annexations over the years along that road. So I'm asking in your 280 plan that you do not add that designation to this area. Sometime I would like you to ride out there behind the trash truck, and as it stops along each of these little driveways, as the hill goes up, there's no chance for passing, there's no chance for doing anything but riding along, and it's, it's pretty dangerous. And you don't have parks out there, you don't have a green space, you don't have a lot of services as you increase the population that really are needed. And so I would appreciate you keeping our rural area designated rural for the time being through 2030. Thank you.
Anybody else? Who would be next?
All right. Hi, it's Gene Dulany. I live at 1756 Warren Lane. I really just wanted to come and see the new building. I haven't been in here. I'm sorry I picked the Planning Commission to do that. My sister-in-law, Ann, told you some things about this area, and I won't, I won't try to repeat what she said, but just a couple of other things that I would just like to point out. I like the idea of the, of the new residential zoning. I think that's a great idea, to make that transition from rural to more dense residential. And there, there are a lot of places I see that's, that's a good thing. I agree with Ann in, in this 41 acres that's included adjacent to the nonconforming lots, that, that you already have a transition there through those lots, and, and it really doesn't make sense to have that 41 acres zoned anything other than rural. If you look to the east of that, there are three sides of this that, that are, that are fronted by larger tracts of land. You've got a 93-acre piece of land, a 33-acre piece of land, and a 195-acre piece of land, and you're talking about putting this new limited residential district right up against that. To me, the more appropriate thing to do would be to have a rural zoning in that place, to do the transition. So if you're looking from east to west, that's the logical transition, and I would just encourage you to, to consider that when you, when you move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you have a zoom-out look at this map? Get the bigger, like, there we go, like that, thanks. Anybody else? Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. For motion and then discussion.
I'd like a motion that we approve item six on the agenda and talk about it a little bit in the discussion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, discussion?
The, the folks that spoke, we're glad to hear you, but you may be, don't give up now. You may be more effective when we talk about item eight on the agenda and the map, and also at a later date when we, if ever, talk about changing the zoning. We're not proposing that at this meeting or in this motion. And then in addition to that, the council will have final approval. We will just make a recommendation. And we were glad to hear from you, but you may be more effective in some of these other
Okay, Amber, let's do a roll call.
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jager?
Yes.
Plasenby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Board?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Breitenbaugh?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to, let's see, this is item number, item number seven, which covers the map amendments, the land use plan. And this is PL 2021-00341. Would anybody, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this. Would anybody like to come speak on the map amendments? This just basically is the change that we can put into the comp plan based on the texts that we just approved.
Good evening. I'm Kevin Bennett and part of that same family, 7001 Stonewall Road. I'm interested in the maps and I have half a statement, half a question here. Much of our concern has to do with roads. And the tendency out in our areas, we've got Highway 147, known inside the corporate limits as Heath Road. You have Stonewall Road, known outside the corporate limits as, as Lee Road 95. It's known as Stonewall Road. It's terminus in Auburn. Stonewall Road is terminus in Opelika. In the middle is the Stonewall Road. But we've got a few pieces that have other signs as well, which confuses a lot of people. When we look at the maps, I don't see any talk about new roads and things yet. I know the, the long-range plans of city include perhaps an outer loop that might have a terminus in this area. And I don't see that in the 280. And it's right there where we're talking, okay, right where we're talking, but that's not included. So it's, it's very interesting to me, and this is a question to you, where is that? And was that considered in, in your designations of use? Because I believe the Heath Road carriage could be changed by an outer loop terminus there. And I've been disappointed in the past a little bit. Auburn defers to Aldott on Highway 147. And Aldott doesn't necessarily care about the details up there. They defer to Lee County on Stonewall Road. And Lee County doesn't care much about the details either. And the speed limits are beginning to get inappropriate for what you're doing. There's a lot of recreational activity going on that if you don't live there, you don't see it. I mean, but when you come over the hill and see two baby carriages and three people coming and you know that there are log trucks and other, other things moving at high speeds. I just think we need to look at roads, too. I think the mapping is the appropriate place to talk about that. And I don't see any of the, the future reflected in what you're doing in the 280 study about future roads and the impact on them.
Yeah, we'll, we'll address that after the public hearing, because there's a process for that that engineering can talk about.
Yeah, I, I would like to encourage the Auburn to, to, you know, lean on Aldott and Lee County to do things and to consider that, not simply defer to them.
Thank you. Anybody else on this item? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And I guess one of the, the first thing I would do would be to ask the city engineer, can you give us a little bit of, how does the planning for roads, you know, integrate with planning for, like, we're basically just looking at future land use and we're not really considering roads as we do it. But as we get closer and closer to something that's more permanent, then we, you get involved. And so how does, how does that basically work?
Yeah, you're absolutely right. At this point, we're not looking at individual roads. As part of our discussion with the planning department.
In our stakeholder meeting, we did talk about the outer loop. So it is, even though it's not physically represented on this map, the planning department is aware of its alignment.
And is that something that is, you know, the public can come in and have a chat with you and just see what's out there? You know, what's going on for?
Yes, the outer loop, the feasibility study was done, I think, in 2007. Those alignments haven't changed. We are currently under contract with another consultant to reevaluate those alignments. And this is one of the ones that we've asked them to look at a little closer because of this study and because of the potential for development. But they're working on some alignment refinements, if you will, for us right now on the, on the west side, what we call the west leg of the outer loop.
Then I guess as, as we get closer, again, just to reiterate, as we get closer to actually building, that's when real roads start to appear, you know. And so that, it starts pretty broad and pretty, you know, strategic, I guess. And then it gets a little more detailed as time goes on. Okay, I'd like to get a motion on the table and then some discussion if we need to.
I move to approve PL 2021-00341.
Have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on this?
Yeah, just under discussion. I'm, I'm, just for the record, I'm not in favor of designating this area, especially that belongs to the university, which to my knowledge, we've never done for any other property that we've got. It's, it's, present day, it's meaningless in that we have no jurisdiction or the university does not have to abide by the regulations of this planning commission. So it's, would only be for future use. And I think we've got enough regulations existing to handle any future development should it ever be sold. And I'm not as young as I used to be, but I don't think I'll ever live long enough to see the university sell any property out there on that highway. But it could. And so I, I would just not be in favor of that corridor protection zone being on this map as it raises a new issue to deal with, with the university and their personnel.
Chairman?
Sir?
I'd, I'd like to voice a slightly different opinion than my distinguished colleague on, in the fact that we are dealing with future land use planning. That's what this is. So we're not talking about the present, we're talking about the future. No, we cannot regulate university property as long as the university owns it. What I'm looking for is some way of communicating to potential buyers, should the university, should they, choose to do land swaps or, or sell that land or whatever they may choose to do, that the potential buyer knows that this is an area of, of interest and concern to the city planning. And therefore, there may be some, in other words, I'm just trying to avoid any future shock for people who would purchase that property. Let them know what we had in mind, if we do have it in mind.
Logan, am I correct in assuming that because it's university now and should on the, it be sold to someone private and go out of state hand, it would be designated rural, correct?
I believe that's the case, yes.
And we don't have any future land use designated other than that in this plan?
I mean, it's currently designated, just like this property, as university, which just says university. But yeah, if, if the property is removed from state ownership, I believe it would be then zoned rural by default.
Because it is in the city limits.
Correct, by legislation.
And we don't, we're not putting any other type of designation on top of that in this plan?
Correct.
So if someone wanted to rezone it, it would technically not be in accordance with our future land use? Potentially.
Potentially.
I'm not gonna say 100%.
Okay, further discussion? All right, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Plasenby?
No.
Marshall?
Yes.
McWard?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Breitenbaugh?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. We're on to item number eight, 1027 East Glen. PL 2021-006, or 362. Mr. Howell?
Yeah, so as you just stated, the, this application is to rezone approximately three and a half acres from Neighborhood Conservation District to Corridor Redevelopment District East. It's located at 1027 East Glen Avenue and NC 12 zoning district. The subject property is just to the east of Cherry Street and on the north side of East Glen Avenue, just west, excuse me, just east of the Glenn Dean intersection. You can see that it's, as it is currently, it's predominantly a residential area with DDH in the north, with some other Neighborhood Conservation Districts along the north side of East Glen. This is a, this is a exhibit of the original plat. And so as you can see, it's, a lot has been developed. The red dashed lines indicate current roads as they exist and have traveled through the, through those lots over time. And the subject property is highlighted in yellow there. So as you can tell, as this was originally platted in the, since 1945, there's been a significant amount of change. The future land use of this, this property and many of the adjoining properties is designated as mixed-use office residential. This was identified when the comp plan was originally adopted in 2011 and has not changed since then. It was on the, on the eastern boundary of 2019's Glenn Dean focus area study and stayed out of the, it was out of that, that focus area study at the time because the, the staff felt like it, it did not necessarily need to be updated from the, from the original, the original designation in 2011. And so did not expand the, to incorporate it. And as such, the applicant is looking to redevelop this particular area with a mixed-use development that would include office and residential on the entirety of the property. It would be the first of these properties that would start to align with the city's future develop, future land use plan. So in, in and of itself, that does make it unique with the, as far as the current status of that area. Because of the, because of its alignment with the future land use plan, staff is recommending approval. We did receive correspondence from owners in the, in Birch Circle to the, to the north and other owners from unstated, unstated property? Or they didn't tell us where they were from, in opposition to the, in opposition to the proposal. This is an aerial, so you can see it's a, there's a single, there's a single unit on the property right now. It's, as you can tell on the aerial there, it's very well forested there, or treed. And pending your questions from staff.
Is there a representative would like to speak on this?
I have the answer to your question.
Okay, thanks. Okay, this requires a public hearing. I'd like to open the public hearing at this time. Anybody would like to come forward and speak on this item, please do.
Good evening. My name is Dawn Mullins. I reside at 1050 Birch Circle, which is part of the cottages subdivision, which is directly behind the proposed rezoning area that Mr. Willis, on behalf of Mr. Speak, is asking to rezone. First of all, what I would like to bring to the planning commission's attention is that very few members or residents of this neighborhood were contacted. Me being one. There are, I believe, four different homeowners here. A couple received letters, several did not. I took upon myself to send out some letters to the neighborhood. It being a very short notice, I believe the sign went up on Glen. The first part of last week, the council meeting is tonight. There wasn't ample time for us to be able to get together and present a unified presentation to the planning commission. So the first thing I'm going to ask is that we can continue or postpone this until we have a little bit more time for the residents to voice their concerns and oppositions. I mean, I can tell you at the very beginning what mine are and what several of the members here are opposing. But I feel like it would be best if we had just a little bit more time so that we can request additional studies on behalf of Mr. Speak, the Foresight Group, and Mr. Willis. Is that something, am I kind of making sense here? I've lived in Auburn all my life. I was born here, 1961. I inherited the home at 1050 Birch Circle. It's a residential neighborhood. We feel like what they're asking for is going to just forsake the integrity of a residential neighborhood. It basically backs up, if you look to houses, homes that have children right there, you're looking at a proposed complex that will have a minimum of 29 units in it. That's over 100 different people. If you look at his, I mean, and, and I can stop any time. Like I said, we prefer to postpone this until we can be a little bit better prepared. But, you know, it's just a residential neighborhood. It's gonna change the integrity of our neighborhood. It's going to be lighting, noise, it's gonna be the traffic that it entails, what's gonna happen on Glen Avenue to accommodate this apartment complex. Are we gonna put traffic lights there? Cherry Street is already really, really busy, which runs, as you can see, from Annalou over to Glen. There are homes there, you know, and we're talking four acres. I used to own a home that had three and a half acres. I couldn't imagine putting five apartment complexes right, right in my backyard. The city, you know, I feel like is trying to do the best thing it can for its citizens. But this complex we're looking at is for probably students. They're not going to be here long-term. We are long-term residents. We have a vested interest in this community. So far as the commercial end of it, if you drove from this property a mile and a half, there are numerous, numerous properties that are up for lease or rent, commercial, office. Within a mile, there's plenty of vacancies. Let me think, what else? As Mr. Holland said, this is going to set a precedent for Auburn. We're talking about going from a Neighborhood Conservation District to another zone. Does that mean Moore's Mill is gonna get treated the same way? Are we gonna be able to take residential houses, put in an apartment complex, and then right next to it do something else? I really don't think that that's what we're looking for. Auburn's the loveliest village on the plains. We want to maintain that integrity. And frankly, Auburn just has too much growth. And I just feel like we're moving a little fast with this. There wasn't enough information given to the residents of the cottages. And I don't know how many people he sent letters to.
Well, we'll discuss that at the public hearing.
Okay, so I guess what I'm really asking is, can we postpone this until we get more information?
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I don't know. I mean, there are other members here.
What else would like to speak?
Hello, I'm Brent Catchings, I own the property at 1,002 Birch Circle. And I agree with what Ms. Mullins stated, everything that she stated. But I would just say again, you know, just to reiterate what she had mentioned. You know, this neighborhood, when I bought, purchased that home, and of course to today, these are single-family home lots, which is the, oh man, again, Neighborhood Conservation, that's conservation, that's what we're talking about. And even when, I would say, I guess approximately seven years ago, eight years ago, when they developed further Cherry Street onto what up until that time had been a single-family home, there was one home on that property where the Cherry Street extension went over to. That development was not this mixed-use development that we're talking about today. That continued the trend, even though there are multiple single-family homes on that, what had been one lot. What was built on that continued the character of that neighborhood, which is single-family homes. And so again, you know, what this is proposing is an entirely different, obviously, type of development. And again, just changing the entire character of, I think, that neighborhood. You know, and I, I think that's what Ms. Mullins spoke to. And what I would speak to is that I think this is a, a change that, you know, so this property owner wants a change, and that's their dream. Well, that's not the dream that I had when I bought my property, as a senior. Well, that's not the dream that I had when I bought my property as a single home. And I think that's not the case for, for other homeowners in the area. So, that's my statement. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who will be next?
Hello, my name is Mallory Hayes, and I live at 1784 Solomir Court, which is on the west side of town, so not at all close to this. But I, I was very concerned whenever I saw the zoning sign go up because I just moved to Solomir from Ivy Lane, which is not on the map. It's just east of that, the Hickory Wood subdivision. But it hurt to, whenever we did move out of Ivy Lane, the house was just too small and we needed a bigger place. But it hurt to leave that area because of where it is uniquely situated in Auburn. It's a very nice area of town. It's lots of walking areas. You'll see families walking there, kids on the sidewalks. It's a, it's a very neighborhood area. And while the future use plan does designate this as potentially being mixed-use, I think that if you look at the, the map, there's a gradient that is, that could be used to get that, or there, that would interrupt the gradient that is there. There's commercial to the west, residential, and then right in the middle, you'll want to start doing this mixed-use development, and that would really destroy the character of that area. In addition, there are a lot of houses there, and new construction has just recently went up for people who are living near it. I wouldn't have built a brand-new house there if I knew somebody was about to put in, oh, an apartment complex with commercial properties there as well. So, I think that you should maintain the character of that area. It's very unique within the loop of Auburn, and it's going to be, be precious in the future.
Thanks.
My name is Tyler Jones. So, I live at 1030 Birch Circle, which is on the, the south side of the loop. So, this would pretty much be in my backyard. I, I'd like to also ask for just a continuance, I suppose. I'm not entirely sure what the property development is going to be. I don't know just how many, I've heard some conflicting reports of how many buildings and how many residences, and also, is this the, sort of like the first domino to fall of all of these properties that are slated for, you know, in future development? I'd like to find out a little bit more about it because, again, I'm not even entirely sure whether I support or oppose it at this point. So, just based on that, I think the best movement at this point would at least be to, to have a continuance and at least give the residents and property owners an opportunity to learn a little bit more about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have that exhibit that you can show that what's going to be on the proposed at this point on the property?
Would you like for me to give a quick brief?
Yeah, if you don't mind, which, what's, what we're looking at here?
All right, so this is an exhibit of the, for the next case, which is the conditional use application for the development. Like we talked about it, it's a mixed-use residential and office development.
Hey Jay, why don't we just continue on with the, the rezoning? And then we'll get to this one.
It's a separate item. I just don't want to muddy the water.
Public hearing's still open, anybody?
Yep. Public hearing's still open. Anybody else want to come forward?
My name's Richard Speak. I live at 1109 East Glen, adjacent to this property. My brother, the other Mr. Speak, he lives in Florida. Okay. And he wants to take his half and just turn it into something that nobody recognizes anymore. It's heavily wooded. It's still zoned for two more houses on it, 3.5 acre acres. And there's no reason to destroy all that. I live right next door to it.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion so we can put that on the table and have a discussion.
Second?
Second discussion.
Can you, do you have the, the land use plan handy?
How long has the land use plan been, future land use been designated this?
That was originally adopted in 2011.
The original plan.
This future land use. Version.
This was the original designation, if I'm understanding your question.
Yes.
Well, this is, this is one of the toughies. It's transitional. We obviously recognized in, when you say 2011, that this area was going to change. You've got the Glendale intersection, which is one of the most highly trafficked, commercial sections in Auburn. You've got a church in there, and we've got that East Glen all the way out to, to the interchange as being heavily, being heavily developed. So, what happens in these areas that have been, and granted, this is the, some nice neighborhoods right here behind it. So, it puts, it's a real dilemma because we did say, and we anticipated, and I think it will continue to change. And so, we have to deal with it now, and this is the first one to come forward this way. But, you know, when we, there was a long, when we did the land use plan, it was a good bit of discussion and public hearings and that sort of thing, when we identified to the public what we thought was going to take place there. So, if we don't rezone it, we're not supporting our own plan. And maybe then we, if we're acknowledging we made a mistake, or if we do rezone it according to our plan, we will have some, some impacts on further, there'll be further development similar probably come along. So, this is not an easy one. But now, there may be, when we get to the, dealing with the, the use request, the, the conditional use, we may be able to do some buffering kinds of issues that may protect the property behind it. But anyway, we've got to do something.
Ask a question about notification. Just what's the standard procedure? Is it adjoining properties or is it?
Right. The adjoining property owners received a certified letter, and rezoning signs went up on the 23rd of June. And then the conditional use sign for the next item on the agenda went up last Friday.
Could you maybe just specify exactly what adjoining means?
Absolutely.
Effect, it's not the same as affected properties?
Any of the properties that touch this property received a letter, and that includes across Glen Avenue as well.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
We do have a motion and a second. Any more further discussion? Okay, let's go ahead. I want to do a roll call on this one too, Amber.
Bridges? Yes. Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Blasenby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Breitenbaugh?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
The motion carries. We'll move on to item number nine. This is PL 2021-00375. And this is 1027 East Glen mixed-use. So, this is the conditional use of what will be, you know, the use for that property is what we're going to be addressing now. Mr. Howe?
That's correct. This is the conditional use approval request specifically for the performance residential aspect, which is conditional in a corridor redevelopment district, which, being just heard. So, it is same location as it's, as we just had a lot of conversation about. It is, this is a, here's the site plan that we were talking about earlier. It includes off, office on the building to the south that would front East Glen, as well as office on the building that would front it on the north side as well. That would include two additional residential units above that. And it would also include four structures of residential buildings behind the, behind the, the office buildings located where the pointer is showing there. The total office, the total residential units would be 29 residential units on the, on the three and a half acres. That proposed density would give it approximately eight, eight point one dwelling units an acre, which is less than the twin, the 10 dwelling units an acre allowed in that proposed zoning district. Open space requirements with the performance residential developments are, in the CRDE, are 15%. And the applicant, which would equal out to about a half acre, a little bit more, and the applicant is proposing approximately one acre, as you would see it on the, in between the, in between the, the residential buildings and in the back, where you would see the, where the, on the, this is oriented facing, with north facing to your right. So, the back of the property would have a significant amount of open space there.
So, that's birch back behind that alley.
That's correct.
Birch is to the right, yeah.
There is a 15-foot buffer yard. We talked, there was the question about the buffer yard. There would be a 15-foot requirement there, and the, the applicant is providing that, that spacing there. There would also be additional landscaping requirements and buffer yard requirements that would, or, excuse me, landscaping requirements in those buffer yards that they would have to meet as well.
What's the status of that alley, the 20-foot alley? I mean, is that just wooded? Or is it, is that going to be, what's the consideration there?
It is, so I have not.
Looks like it's wooded, but.
I have not walked back there. Yeah, I, I am presuming that it is wooded. It is not used before any vehicles. So, that being said, there's, there's a lot, there's an awful lot of alleys platted from 1945 that are still there today.
Who owns it?
The city does.
City owns it?
It is, yes, it is public right-of-way. It's just unimproved.
Okay, so the city then has control of the 20 feet that abuts between this property and the Birch Circle.
So, the additional 15 feet is after the 20 feet.
That's correct.
That is correct.
So, there's 35 feet.
35 feet of buffer yard.
And what are the landscape requirements that you mentioned?
Landscaping requirements, they would include, for the entire site, they would include approximately 50 canopy trees, 68 understory trees. They would be, that would be mixed between the, the front, primarily along the front of the, the development where it would face, where it would face East Glen. If the commission saw fit to add that as a stipulation to the, the conditional use, they could add additional inches to the, to the rear of the property if you so desired.
And where is the dumpsters? Where are the dumpsters?
The dumpster is located in the back, still well outside of the, the buffer yard area, but to the, to the rear of the residential property, residential units.
Are the dumpsters required to be fenced or?
Yes, for this, this is in the corridor, this is, not only is it in the corridor redevelopment district, it's also in a corridor overlay district. Corridor overlay regulations require additional, additional requirements in, in cladding materials, screening requirements, and a few other requirements. And just because I haven't said it yet, staff is recommending approval and, and the correspondence we've received, just like from the previous case.
He said it's 29 units.
That's correct.
You know, beds or, one bedroom, two bedrooms?
So, the bedroom requirements, parking is, parking is a, parking is based on the bed count in a, in a multifamily development such as this, which would equal out to one in, 1.1 beds per, excuse me, 1.1 spot, parking spaces per bed. The bedroom count was 87 bedrooms. I, as I understand, it's mostly, it's, as I understand, it's mostly three bedrooms. There might be a mix of different ones. The applicant could probably speak to that a little bit better than I can right now.
And then some of that residential is above the smaller office?
That's correct. I believe those are your smaller two-bedroom at most type units.
What, how many stories are these buildings on the back?
On the back, the...
Talking of the residential, right?
Yes. Well, either way, the ones are on the back because the houses on Birch Circle are relatively close to the back of their lots. And I was going to see what sort of privacy.
As I recall, the discussions that we've had with, as I recall, the discussions we've had with the developer were two-story.
Two-story, okay.
And I'll let him correct me when it's his turn to speak.
Townhouse style, so it wouldn't be much higher than the, than the two-story houses that are adjacent to it.
Let's, let's go ahead and open the hearing and then go from there. So, I'm going to open the public hearing on this conditional use. So, if anybody would like to speak on this, please come forward now. Your representative.
Yeah, Brett Baswin, Foresight Group, here representing the developer. You know, there's some questions about notification. Prior to submittal, the developer did notify adjacent property owners above and beyond the required notification that we have to do as part of, of a rezoning submittal. In our conversations with staff, they highly recommended that, and, and that was sent out before, so I wanted to note that. I also want to note that I think it's also important that along Cherry Street, which is immediately adjacent to us, is lined with duplexes. You know, it's a, it's, it's currently duplexes along Cherry Street. I think, if I don't recall, I think most of those duplexes have been there for, you know, since the 40s, 50s, 60s, they're, they're old. Wanted to note that along the rear between this property and, and the single-family residential behind there, there is a 20-foot alley that's owned by the city that's additional buffering between the single-family and this development. I think part of, when we were looking at siding and doing this development, we were trying to keep this as close to Glen as we could and away from the single-family in the rear. Also want to note that, you know, we're providing on the open space side two times as much as we, we really have to. I, I think that that's important. In regards to the use, this isn't going to be an apartment complex. The thought is that this will look and feel and be like a townhome look and feel where these are going to be individual, you know, unfortunately, this is not being built as a public street, so we can't subdivide them and fee simple and make those fee simple townhomes. But when you go and drive up and look at them, it's going to be a, a look and feel as a, as a townhome type, look and feel, and of course, it's going to have a condo ownership because that's the only way to do it in that perspective. The parking that we have shown is currently shown to accommodate not only the office, but up to a maximum of three-bedroom units. I'm not quite sure if these units will be twos and threes and, and a mix through there, but for all intents and purposes, we've planned for a maximum of three-bedroom units, and we can always scale that back and scale back the parking accordingly. And, and again, it's, it's a two-story like we talked about. You know, most of the, the, the stuff in the front that'll have first floor commercial or office, you know, that'll be a, a full two-story because there's a full use above it. Most of these townhomes... Most of these townhomes will probably be a max of a story, you know, a story and a half type use from the townhome side. But happy to answer any questions.
The larger buildings, the commercial, is only a single-story, right, on the front?
No, it's two-story.
Is that two-story as well? Is there residential proposed to be on top of that as well, a second story?
No. So as you're looking at that site plan, the big building to the south right there is two-story for office use. The smaller building that fronts to the north, first floor is office. And then second story, there's two units proposed above that.
So these other four buildings are two-stories, where you're gonna have residential up top and then the bottom is offices?
No, no, no. The stuff in the back is all residential.
All residential, no offices in it?
Yeah. The only commercial is along the frontage there.
And those will be sold as condos?
Yeah.
So it's not maintaining one ownership. They're gonna be sold as individual units?
The units in the back...
The residential.
Yeah, the residential in the back is intended, yes, to be separated. The stuff in the front, I think, is gonna be under one common ownership.
With the understanding it can't be fee simple because the road frontage issue.
Correct.
Which is why we're having to call it multi.
Multifamily, yeah, correct.
Thank you.
Can we still have a public hearing open? So anybody else would like to speak, please come forward. Come on.
Just once again, I understand that if they met the minimum requirement, that's only four houses.
Just for the record name and address real quick.
Don Mullins, 1050 Burge Circle. And I live in the base of the cul-de-sac, so it's not even touching my property. But if you're reaching out to the property owners, that's only four property owners, four, even though it's going to that on Burge Circle. Yes, yes. So like I said, I feel like it was a very small number to actually be able to even come here and voice some concerns. I am a little bit confused because on this rezoning, it says that it can allow up to five unrelated tenants. And I would just like him to respond to that per unit. And if I'm not mistaken, when I look at that map, I believe there's five different apartment unit buildings there. Am I mistaken? How many different buildings are we talking about? I think there's more than that. There's one, two, three, four, five.
Count them out there, Logan. There's one across the top.
Strictly residential, there are four.
Okay, and then we have the commercial in the...
Then there's a mix on the one corner lot that has residential.
In the front, okay, okay. So, and he's saying now that they're going to be sold as condominiums, townhomes? They're not gonna be rented through like a central office? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, yeah, that's not before us, I'm afraid. We can't really address that.
So again, once again, we would just like to ask that we can postpone this until we can get some clarity. I understand about the rezoning that that was done in 2011, unfortunately. I wasn't aware of that, and I don't think a lot of the property owners were. But we would just like some time to be able to work with the plans, kind of see what we're looking at, if we can request maybe just some changes, amendments to it, and, you know, just kind of work with the residents that are there. Give us just a minute to breathe, to take it in, because like I said, this happened very quickly for us as residents. And I just want to reiterate everything from the noise level, the traffic that it's going to pose on Cherry Street cutting through Glen, that whole area is gonna have to be rezoned. I don't know if you're familiar with that particular lot, but there's like a median. Are you gonna tear that up and put a traffic light to get in and out? Are we gonna do one-way traffic? I just think there's just much more that needs to be entailed in this than just going, "Okay, it's fine." I really appreciate your time. I'm not a public speaker. I just kind of found out about it last week, and we just did the best we could to kind of throw this together. So thank you so much for your time.
There'll be another opportunity at City Council.
Will we? Okay, awesome. Love to address it, but thank you so much.
No problem. Name and address again one more time.
Brick Catchings, and again, 1002 Burge Circle, which is not directly affected by that, but it's right next to it. And where is the dumpster? The dumpster is in my next-door neighbor's backyard. That's where it is. And 1.1 spaces per bedroom, and I'm looking at the same information you have that... What you didn't say, I think somebody asked about parking spaces. I'm looking at the same information. It's 158 spaces, right? So you're privy to that information too? Mike, it's a statement of fact, not a question, I guess. But I think someone on the panel asked how many parking spaces are involved, and you gave a 1.1. What I'm stating is just simply we're going from one home on the lot, and now we have 158 parking spaces, and...
The parking spaces were being discussed to determine how many bedrooms there were.
Yeah, I understand what they were being discussed for. But I'm just pointing out, Mr. McCord, I think, stated earlier that it takes a lot to think about when you're making a change and whether or not you made a mistake. It does take a lot to think about that. It's called cognitive dissonance, to admit that an idea you had in the past is wrong. So I'll leave you with that.
Thank you.
Tyler Jones, I live at 1030 Burge Circle. Just a question. So I wanted to know, is the new zoning that this would be in permit the owners to rent to college students, unrelated college students? Or is it strictly limited to... And I'm not well-versed in all of the zoning requirements around the city, but...
CRD allows up to five unrelated people, so it's conceivable.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, anyone else? Hey, seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Let's get a motion on the table and have some discussion.
Move to approve PL 2021-00375.
A second.
In a second, discussion.
I do have a question. What is the distance between this curb cut and Cherry Street? And since it does have a median, will it just be a right-in, right-out?
I'll have to check the distance, but to answer your second question, yes, because of the median, it will be right-in, right-out.
So there's no plans to remove the median?
No, the only way medians can be removed is by action of the City Council.
But a right-in, right-out? I mean, no left turns coming out of there?
Yeah, no left turns, yeah.
So the median stays.
Let me ask Brett. The... Is it feasible to move the dumpsters to some other location, like at the other end of that row of buildings? Which would move it further away from the Burge Circle?
Closer back towards Glen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's potential for that.
I think I would...
Maybe closer to the commercial property.
Yeah, those, you know, I don't know what the limits, time limits, but those trucks that come in and empty those make a lot of noise. And I think that would be better.
The trash truck driver might like it, too.
Yeah, he might, 'cause turning around back there...
I do have one more question. With this mixed use, I see that we're doing conditional use approval for a performance residential, but there will be commercial use there? Are there a list of approved already uses?
So as of right now, it is only being considered for office? No, no commercial as it is right now. If the applicant chose to convert some of that space to commercial, that would have to be considered on a case-by-case basis. If some of that became, if based on the table of permitted uses, if there was a conditional... If something was only allowed in the CRD on a conditional basis, it would come before you, they would go through the exact same process as is being heard right now. And there would also be other considerations as far as permitting the design based on an office requirements? How does changing those to a commercial requirement? How do they... Are they satisfied still? Are they not satisfied? Whole other conversation.
Okay. One more question for Allison. Is a decelerating lane gonna be required to be put in? I know, I'm sorry.
Part of the design manual, deceleration lanes are required on all collectors and arterials. So yes, ma'am, it would be required unless a waiver was granted.
I just don't see it, so that's what I was asking.
Yes, ma'am. And Ms. Reese, to answer your question, it's approximately 300 feet from Cherry Street.
I understand that the decelerating lane is required. It's not shown on the drawing, but it is required.
It is required, yes.
Good. That's my question.
So how is that being addressed? That's not a... That's not an engineering comment on this.
So it's something that's in our design manuals currently, and so we will address it with the DRT supplemental.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to amend, make amendment, propose amendment to the motion that it be approved subject to the condition that the dumpsters be moved to the south end of the buildings to where it's located now.
Do we want to go more specific, or is the south gonna be appropriate?
Well, this thing is oriented north and south, it's opposite. But move to the other end. The Glen Avenue end of those buildings, six...
The precise location can be worked out?
Yeah, yeah, but the main thing is I would make it conditional, since this is a conditional use, add the condition that it move that dumpster to the other end of that row of buildings.
I'd second the amendment.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Okay, that amendment carries. Now we are on to the original motion. Yes, more discussion on the original motion? Okay, let's have a roll call vote on that one, please.
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Blasenby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
All right, motion carries. All right, let's see. We have postponed a number of them. Let's see which is the next. I think what... It looks like item number 15 is the next one. Heart of Auburn Lot Consolidation, PL 2021-00376.
Okay.
Ms. English?
Yes.
Would you like to present, please?
I would be happy to. The next two items on your agenda involve the Heart of Auburn Development Site and the neighboring properties to the south. The first request is for preliminary plat approval for the consolidation of eight lots into two. The properties are located between South College Street and South Gay Street, just north of East Sanford Avenue, and are all zoned urban core. There is an array of uses on these properties, including restaurants and retail along South College and restaurants along Gay, as well as two single-family units along East Sanford. And there is a multiple-unit development at the corner of South College and East Sanford. This lot consolidation is requested in anticipation of future redevelopment of the expanded site. Plans have not been submitted yet for that redevelopment. The future land use designation is urban core, and this designation permits high-density residential and commercial uses. However, private dormitories are not allowed. There are minor comments that must be addressed before the city signs the plat. The applicant and Water Resource Management reached an agreement regarding the requested 30-foot public sanitary sewer easement, so that comment can be taken off. And aside from that, the plat meets requirements of the subdivision regulations, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. All right, this preliminary plat requires... Mr. Bascom, anything? Okay. This requires a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing at this time. Anybody would like to come forward, please do, to speak on this item? Okay, seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Ask for a motion.
Move to approve, PL 2021-00376, second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that? We need a roll call, please.
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Blasenby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Number... Item number 16 is the final plat for that same property, and this is PL 2020-00377. Ms. English?
Yes, that about covers it. Of eight lots into two, and the same comments apply.
Very good. This does not require a public hearing. Can I get a motion and...
Move on approval, item 16.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Did we say with staff comments?
With, yeah, with staff comments.
With staff comments.
Right, because we're removing the...
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number 17, this is Woodward Oaks Phase 5, a preliminary plat. This is PL 2021-00381. Mr. Howell?
Yes, this specific request is a preliminary plat approval request for an 89-lot performance subdivision. It will include 40 townhouse lots, 29 cottage development lots, 12 single-family detached lots, seven open-space lots, and one commercial lot. It involves approximately a little over 21 and a half acres and is part of the Woodward Oaks PDD on the north side of town. As you can see here, it is just on the south side of West Farmville Road in that PDD. You have, to the west of it, you have the Donahue and Farmville Road intersection, as well as the Donahue Ridge subdivisions to the west. It's currently zoned DDH with a PDD overlay. You'll recall from last month that applicant brought to you a request to amend the PDD to allow the inclusion of cottage housing developments, as well as an increase in the total units from the 517 that was originally, or that had been approved, up to 580, and also the addition of 20,000 square feet of commercial space. And they also, along with those, had a conditional use request for the commercial space, that the lot itself is part of this plat. You have... You recommended approval for those items, and it will go to City Council next, at their next meeting on July 20th, for their consideration. The... All right, so this is the proposed, or this was the most current master development plan as presented from the PDD amendment that you heard. And part of... As part of that, it included some changes, some changes to the north of the PDD, which is oriented to the right on the screen, where you see a little bit more dense development, which would complement the area that's up there along the arterial of Farmville, a Farmville Road. That included townhomes that fronted James Burt, as well as cottage units in the back behind them. And this is essentially the plat that would follow up to that. There, okay. Two drivers. So this is the plat as proposed. You can see that it has, includes the lots we just spoke about. It includes the townhomes and the cottages, as well as some single-family as it starts to transition to the more spaced-out internal PDD towards the south of it. The overall density is being proposed is 3.74 dwelling units an acre, which is less than the DDH maximum of 5 and 1/2. The minimum space that... The minimum space that, excuse me, the minimum open space that's required in any single phase within a PDD at the DDH zoning district is 15%, and the applicant is providing 19%, which is approximately 3.8 acres. In addition to the plat, the applicant is also requesting a waiver to the the city's subdivision regulations to allow a public alley to constitute the mandatory street frontage for any residential lot. The nature of that would be because on the backside behind the the townhomes, the applicant wants to provide a little bit more space for the lots themselves, as well as the open space allowances that he's trying to provide or that they are trying to provide for it. It involves three streets, as you can, or excuse me, four streets. No, I'm sorry, three, that that provide frontage specifically for those cottages. All the townhouse, all the townhouse units will take their frontage from either James Burt or the the east-west road that you see to the left of the screen. Working with the applicant, we can, we feel that we can support the, we can, we feel that we could support the request to a certain degree. Alley's are designed to carry less less traffic than a standard road, which would have about 50 feet verse 50 feet width in their right-of-way versus alley's that allow for 30 feet. That said, there is a there is a consideration for the the road that provides outlet ingress and egress for all those cottages that go back there. And that road, look if you'll show that right there, is along the backside of of the cottages and provides that that access in and out. While we while we recommend approval of the waiver for the two streets that are not providing ingress and egress, we do we do recommend denial for that waiver for that specific street, that that should be, that should remain a 50-foot right-of-way.
Okay, so just to clarify, put that pointer on the two that that we're going ahead, it's okay with the waivers?
So there's the the street, the longest street that terminates in a cul-de-sac to the right.
Gotcha.
And continues on and continues to the left and takes a 90-degree turn to the to the bottom of the screen. And then the road that parallels it and connects it with the the street that we are recommending to.
The one that goes across the bottom is the one you're saying?
Yeah.
That's correct.
It's here.
Okay.
Does this connect, the front and back of the neighborhood?
Staff has not received any communication from any 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 public.
Okay, let's see here. This one requires a public hearing. So I would like to open the public hearing at this time and ask anybody that'd like to speak, please come forward.
Brett Basquelin, Forsyth Group, representing the applicant.
Can you get that?
Which one?
So this is a cottage housing. This is is one of the newer of the city's performance residential uses that's allowed. To date, this has been kind of used, has been used more of a, as a for-rent type product than it has been for fee simple, single-family ownership. On your screen, you'll see that's an example of 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 something similar of cottage housing. Was this developed, was that was that done during, with the cottage housing requirements, or was that?
No.
Essentially, I think this was essentially done under the multifamily requirements, but essentially same concept of 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 houses surrounding a common green space.
Is that at Midtown?
Yeah, that's Midtown. And that has a traditional parking lot configuration, which within the within the cottage housing regulations, there's two ways you can do it. You can do it where it's condo ownership that would look just like this with a parking lot, or you can do it fee simple, which would look more of like a single-family residential subdivision. It's just, remember, this cottage housing is smaller, you know, smaller houses, smaller footprints, bigger green space, fronting on green space. If you go to the next one, the next one is another one. That's at Bragg and Donahue or MLK and Donahue. Kind of done in the same thing, surrounding a common green space. And and in both of these conditions that I'm showing you are much bigger homes than what we're showing and doing within this cottage housing style. If you go to the next slide, the next slide shows you, this is straight out of the zoning ordinance that essentially shows you where this can be done as a fee simple ownership or it can be done as a condo ownership. When we've, you know, when, as this side of town has developed and originally when when we came in with this PDE in 2017, of course, the North Auburn has seen a tremendous amount of growth and change. Our development was probably the pre the impetus for a lot of that, and it's it's kind of happened. Now, on that end, we have the fire station coming in that's across the street from us, and we also have the new elementary school that's just to the west of us that, in our mind, has changed the dynamic and why we wanted to change the PDD to accommodate a little different housing type up near that area. In addition to that, we've provided a connection to the elementary school into our road network. Because really, you know, our neighborhood is is going to be a big feeder for that. But we wanted to, the developer thought it would be a good thing to have that connected where it's going to be another access point through the neighborhood for the for the school. I say all that to say, it kind of changes the way we do it. We had that road fronting with large lot residential, 190, 100-foot wide lots, and each of these lots was going to take access off of this main parkway coming in, Jamesburg Parkway. When we changed, we reconfigured that and are fronting this now with townhomes with rear-loaded access to take all these driveways off of Jamesburg Parkway. And and when we were looking at this 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 cottage housing type, you know, there's kind of two things you're you're going for that we were going for in this. One is affordability, and two is walkability. You know, you hear those as buzzwords all the time. But, you know, at the end of the day, there's really not this product type available for single-family homeownership at this at this point. Most of the stuff that's even remotely close to looking like this and feeling like this is is more of rental product that you have on the market, and it's not fee simple ownership. When we were looking at this plan, we probably started in the middle of the pandemic, and I've gone back and forth with the planning department on this for probably close to a year on different iterations of of what this would look like. And and we were encouraged to potentially come in and do this and subdivide off an alley because of the type of feel and the use that we were trying to achieve with this layout. So that's one of the reasons why we're doing this. And so none of the homes in here have direct access to Jamesburg Parkway. It's all internally driven here. So when we compare the difference between a local street and an alley that we're requesting, right, a two-way alley, in regards to right-of-way width, there's a there's a big difference. It's 50 feet of right-of-way compared to 30 feet of right-of-way. But when we talk about the road width, right, the amount of road that you have to drive on, a two-way street on a on a in a subdivision like this only has to be 22 feet wide of asphalt if we have sidewalks on both sides of the street. The minimum width for an alley is 20 feet, right? So there's only a two-foot difference. Some of some of the roads, which I think Warren, you may be the only one who's around, when we did MEMS Trail, when we did MEMS Trail PDD back in before the crash in '09, it was '07, '08, we had special road sections approved that were even narrower than that. We had some roads out there that were 18 feet wide of only asphalt on a 50-foot-wide public street. And that was kind of some of the impetus of some of the changes of of giving varying road sections that we have. So it's not unique, is my point. It's not unique that we're coming coming in with a little narrower road. I think the the point of that is to, one, to create the character of this cottage housing area. But and we still plan on doing sidewalks on both sides and and those types of things. But I don't want you to, I think what we're trying to achieve here is a character and feel and look of a true cottage-style housing product that is currently nowhere near this in this market, and that's why we're proposing and coming for a waiver on this. So happy to answer any questions, but I just wanted to give you some history and background of of all the different moving parts. I know that when you hear 50 feet and 30 feet, it sounds really drastic. At the end of the day, it's this road's going to be two-foot narrower is is the only difference.
Did you just say you're going to do sidewalks on the alley's in this?
We're still going to have sidewalks on the alley's. The whole goal of this thing is to have it walkable, so.
And the sidewalks, not including that 20 feet?
No, 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 it's outside of that. It's outside of that. So, you know, within the road sidewalks, you know, then you're going to have, depending on selection, they'll be able to have a, you know, they'll be able to either have a a parking pad, a carport, or or a garage. So it'll vary depending on on the on the folks as they purchase those.
Okay, thank you. So we still have a public hearing open. Anybody else who'd like to come speak on the side?
Andy here, had back surgery, so apologies. Ryan Cassidy, Van Atoon, South Gay Street. I'm all for this type of development in Auburn. I think if we've learned anything over the past, it's that good development ideas, you know, Auburn is a place where great development ideas come to die. You know, I think we haven't really been progressive in, you know, some of our standards that allow for things like they're trying to do out there. And I just think, I'm just really taking this opportunity to say, I wish that the city would take this time to come up with some alley standards that would not be coming in for a special request, like, hey, can we do this? We think this would be really cool. We've seen this in X, Y, Z places that people kind of across the board love. But when you come to try to do it in Auburn, it takes, you know, somewhat of an act of Congress to try to get it done. I wish the city would take the time to allow for, hey, here's a few alley standards that we're we'll get behind and allow for fee simple ownership. That's the key here that he's bringing up, you know. And it actually was, you know, on the other project as well that he talked on, you know, they're doing the 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 rezoning you guys touched on, and then, okay, well, we're going to have to condo this thing because it doesn't have access to the street. This has been an issue in this town. I've I've only been here for almost 10 years, but I think it's been an issue. I know Nancy Davis is kind of championing this cause, like, hey, we got to get it where we can have fee simple ownership to these off-street properties, you know, such as townhomes and things of that nature. So, you know, I'm in support of of what they're trying to do here, not not trying to 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 talk negative about what they're doing. I just wish that the city would take the time to kind of back up and put some standards in place where this is something that you see in the future without some special, you know, permission to do so. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? All right, I'll close the public hearing at this time, ask for a motion, some discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Well, let me, before we do that, let me ask a question here. We've got a waiver and a preliminary plat. Should we be deal with them different, separate motions?
Is it one item?
It is one item.
One thing, okay. Because right now, we've had some discussions that talk about how we're going to, you know, that particular waiver, we're kind of cutting it in half.
If you want to separate it, you can.
Yeah, I think I'd like to deal with the waiver separately, if that's okay with everybody.
You don't withdraw her motion? Make a motion for that?
Or did you make, oh?
Why, no, I did not finish that.
Yeah, I kind of cut in before she made her motion.
If you would like, I don't want to make a motion to separate them, so if you would like to make a motion to separate.
Okay, well, go ahead. Go ahead. You started the motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve PL 2021 008381 as presented.
To include the waivers?
To include the waivers.
All the all the waivers he's asking for.
I'm just making a motion, and if someone feels like they need to amend, they're welcome to do that.
And with staff comments.
With staff comments.
Okay.
Have a motion in a second, discussion.
I don't know.
I have questions.
I don't know where we are with making these motions. I would have made a motion to deny.
We don't make motions to deny.
Because this is a, this is a classic case of parcel overload and and abuse of our regulations. We've got standards that were set for houses not to front on secondary roadways. For whatever reason, whether that's good or bad, it exists, and I agree with these other folks, it might ought to be changed. But until it is, I think we should be very cautious to stick to our standards. Now, we're very limited by what we can do from the state, because if it meets the stand, if it meets the standard, we have to approve it. But this does not meet the standard and could be designed where it did. And these lots are, they're double-frontage lots, and there may be more than 10 of these townhouses in a row, which is hard and hard. But but this is one case where I feel like we should set the example to stick in a preliminary plat to our basic standards and let them go back, you used to could say, go back to the drawing board, but I don't know where it goes back to now, some computer CAD system or something that you that you do with it. And another point I would like to make with reference to this preliminary plat, it's not just the design of the plat itself, but if you look in our packet, and I'm not going to read them, and I'm not going to mention any names, but there are an array of statements under planning and under engineering and under GIS. Are things that should have been done basically before this was ever presented to the city for review. And I think I think it was prematurely done and overworked staff in reviewing all of these things and and having to tell the engineering group what's already in our standards. And I appreciate our staff in trying to be accommodating, but I think it would serve us well if they supported the city's position and what our standards are and let the developers engineer try to convince us we ought to change it from that standard. And maybe the motion was made to approve with the idea that we'd vote against it and it would be denied. But I think, I don't think that it ought to be approved. Thank you.
Mac, I'll make the comment. I would, you know, respectfully, I'd go in the totally opposite direction. I would I would approve the plat, and on top of that, I think that a persuasive argument was made that really all three of the waivers should be approved if we're talking about only a two-feet, two-feet of of distance, you know, and they're going to have sidewalks. A person that's, you know, that's basically crossing that road, they're they're not going to know that, oh, this is this is an alley, not a road, and it's really just two-feet difference. And at least in my mind, I think that was a good argument to where the waiver should should apply to all three of those sections. That's my opinion.
I have a question for staff about the request to do, the connecting road is not as an alley. Can you talk about, other than two feet of difference in the width of the road, can you tell me some other reasons why that should be not an alley?
So.
I mean, does it have to do with safety? Does it have to do with fire accident? I mean, what is what is the difference? Is it maintained by the city or is it private? What's the?
So just to just to clarify, the specific request is a waiver for all streets that are, it's a single waiver. The staff is making the recommendation that of those three states, of those three streets, that it would apply. that it would apply to, one of them be withheld, be withheld from that, from that being, that waiver being applicable to.
And what is the reason behind that? That's what I want to know.
The reason behind that is the, the carrying capacity of, the, the design, based on the, I'm speaking to another department's man, but the design, design specifications for a, for a, an alley is roughly about three hundred trips a day, and based on the, based on the, the number of units, this would fall just a hair underneath that, that limit. And so, with more people coming into those, depending on how many people are actually living in the units themselves, it could very easily go above that carrying load, and that was the reason for the, for those, that specific street to be held out.
And that's one of the reasons we supported the, the, his recommendation. If you'll go back to the master plan, it may make a little bit more sense, yes. So, that road on the, I guess that's the east side, could potentially have additional traffic from the remaining part of the subdivision. But I do wanna clarify one thing, Marcus, Brett didn't mention a, a two-foot difference. The difference also between an alley and a local street is the addition of curb and gutter, and drainage is handled differently. So, an alley is simply going to be twenty feet of pavement.
I see.
Without any curb and gutter, and, and drainage features. So, it will look a little bit different.
So, when I say with staff comments, we are making the assumption that that third will be, will be a real road. Will be a real road. Which I don't have a problem with. I love the idea of the alleys, and I think they have a place in our planning, and I think that it has a place in addressing some of the housing types that we need in this area. From my profession, I know we need them, and so I like the idea of these alleys being used to be able to, to build these cottages, and it also meets that requirement that we keep asking for, to have the parking rear-loaded in townhouses, and so I think it's a very nice design compromise to provide more, smaller, more lower-priced housing, but still allow the developer the opportunity to, to make his profit margin off of it as well. So, I don't know what the impact of changing that, that connecting road from an alley to a, to a road is. I, I don't have a problem with doing that. I mean, I don't think that means you lose a unit or two right there along the bottom. But that road coming off James Vert will certainly pick up more traffic than the ones in front of the other cottages, so, I mean, my intent was to...
And another...
My motion was to have, hang on just a second, was to have that staff comment be adhered to, but I just wanted to know why you asked for it, so I appreciate that answer.
One other thing that, that we have taken, I don't know whether two-feet pinch points or not, but you'd have a road that would have, this, this stretch of that road would be two-feet more narrow than the two ends of it.
Based on this design?
Based on the, yeah.
My motion is to have it be a road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion?
What's the motion?
How did we get to the requirement in our regulations that houses front on, at least front on a primary road and not a secondary road? I mean, there's gotta be some...
That's been in the subdivision regulations for a long time.
Very long time.
Very, very long time.
So, we don't know how we got there.
But it's why we see... That's a typical requirement.
...multi-family is instead of fee simple because of that requirement. So, this is, to me, a, a very nice compromise to be able to provide more fee simple product, which we desperately need in, in our market.
If I had to speculate, this, you know, from a previous case that we heard where we see more examples of much older alleys and much older platted areas of town, the intent behind that requirement was first, was trying to prevent someone taking, uh, taking those back alleys as the only frontage on the, on a residential unit. Now, there could be arguments made for and against, you know, how this would compare to those types of alleys from mid-forties.
plausible.
It's certainly worth looking at.
Not a visible, much visible difference between twenty feet and twenty-two feet. There is a difference between not having curb and gutter and having curb and gutter, and the quality of that, which the taxpayer's gonna pay the same tax on that street whether he's got the curb and gutter or not, but the other thing, that extra ten feet out there on each side is what you can do with drainage and other issues, and you don't, you don't have that. And I think from a preliminary standpoint, I think it would be good to see what this, what real changes would have to be made if the preliminary plat met the city's standards for plating and development. And once you saw that, then maybe, it may not make much difference. You may not lose many lots and meet the standard, but I just...
Are alleys public, or does the city maintain them? Okay. And my neighborhood doesn't have curb and gutter, and we still managed to wade through to get to Morse Mills, so, I mean, I, I mean, I think roads without them are designed in such a way that the drainage happens other ways, so, I mean, Grove Hill Road doesn't have curb and gutter.
You've got sw- what do you call, swale sections to handle it, drainage.
And the designer will have to accommodate utilities, drainage, sidewalk, all of that will have to be in a, in a right-of-way or an easement, and that will be reflected on the final plat.
The last thing you really want is the water and sewer lines to have to be put under the pavement, and if you don't have any other place on the side, usually they're on the side, that's where that extra right-of-way is for. And I just, I just think this is a, a place for us to set a standard for preliminary plat, meeting the standard before it comes to us with, with approval and exceptions or variances. Say no more.
The motion in the second on the table is as the city has provided to us, as staff provided. That's what's on, is the motion currently.
That's currently, that's it. So, we have a motion and second. Any more discussion? Okay.
Other question?
Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Bridges? Yes. Chancellor?
Yes.
Jager?
Yes.
Lazenby?
No.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wright and Ball?
No.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item number eight, let's see, eighteen, is that what we're in? Okay, item number eighteen, Bridgewater Phase Two, PL 2021-00420, Ms. Robison.
I'll be presenting for Ms. Robison this evening. I am not as well-versed in the ways of planning, but I'll do my best.
I'm sure you are.
I disagree.
That's right.
Sorry about that. This is a preliminary plat request from Bridgewater Kerry Creek LLC. As you can see, is within the CDD zoning district with an overlay of the planned development district for Kerry Creek. The applicant is requesting a revised preliminary plat approval for a twenty-four-lot conventional subdivision. The revised comes that the original preliminary plat expired just last month. Previous, this is the previous preliminary plat that was approved in the fall of 2018. Phases one of this development have already been built out, we're in the process of doing so right now. The revised preliminary is this section here, as known as Phase Two. There were minimal lot line shifts in this proposal. We have not received any correspondence regarding this case, and we are recommending approval.
Okay, thank you. Is there a representative that would like to speak? Okay, this requires a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing at this time. Would anybody like to come forward? Okay, seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing, ask for a motion and some discussion.
We're gonna approve item eighteen.
Second.
And second discussion. Okay, let's have a roll call on this one, please, Amber.
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jager?
Yes.
Lazenby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
All right, motion carries. Bridge, the next one is item number nineteen, same property. This is the final plat approval, PL 2021-00390, Ms. Kennedy.
Yes, that is exactly what it is. Like I said, the preliminary was originally heard before, and where a lot of the comments were addressed, so we are recommending approval on final plat approval as well.
Motion?
I moved.
Second.
Do we have discussion?
Yeah. Have, have all of the comments been addressed, and this plat ready to be platted?
There are some comments left over from staff that are listed in the staff reports, but you'll see that upon recording of the final plat, we expect all of those to be addressed before signatures.
I expect them, they've got to be addressed. They've got to meet our standards.
Correct.
Yes.
I'm, I'm trying to encourage all of this work getting done before it comes to us for approval, to where you could say, have all of the items in the preliminary plat been addressed, and the answer be, yes, it's ready to be platted, and we approve it, because that's what the state requires.
Okay, I have a motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. We're on to item number twenty. This is Plainsman Lake Town Homes, PL 2021-00389, Mr. Howell.
This case is a request for conditional use approval for performance residential development to be townhomes in the DDH zoning district. This subject property is located on the north side of Martin Luther King Drive, east of Webster Road, in the, in the DDH zoning district. It is between Wester on the south side and Solomir subdivision on the east of this property. It, this is considered a part of the Plains, this is part of the Plainsman Lake development, which you heard about a year ago, when the property was rezoned from rural to this zoning district, DDH, as well as a portion that you see on the bottom left-hand side of the, the subject property for CDD, along the, along the future intersection of the road there. This, here's a site plan for the proposal. The, the townhome units include one hundred and thirty townhome lots on approximately seventy-three-point-seven acres. That represents a density of one-point-seven-six dwelling units an acre, which is significantly underneath the, the five-and-a-half maximum for DDH. The applicant, part of the reason why there's so, so much underneath that, that maximum is the degree of open space that they are providing, which are a requirement of all performance subdivisions. In this particular case, they are providing approximately fifty-five acres of the development, which equals out to about seventy-five percent of the, of this particular subdivision. The townhomes themselves will be distributed along the, and taking their only access off of the planned future connector road between MLK and Richland Road, which the city is, which is, the city is currently developing now in the preliminary phases of that review. Should I cut everything? Future land use designation is for low to medium-density residential, and so this aligns with that. Staff is recommending approval. We have received correspondence from the neighboring subdivision Solomir, primarily for information regarding it, this request, as well as the, the development agreement is all subject to your questions.
A representative would like to speak?
Any answering questions?
Okay. Okay, this requires a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing at this time. Would anybody like to come forward and speak on this item? All right, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, ask for a motion and some discussion.
I'll move to approve PL 2021-00389.
Second.
Second.
And second, any discussion?
So, the only access to these townhomes is off of fourteen, and on the road that will connect up to Richland. Is that what you said?
So...
Unless you wind your way all the way through.
That, so that's correct. The only, so, the only, the only access that they can have would be off of the, would be off of this connector. They would not be allowed access to MLK. Excuse me, frontage. They would not be allowed to take their access from MLK.
Okay.
Yes? Okay, St. K at the bottom, it ends in a cul-de-sac. Why doesn't it just connect to that through street?
I believe that there are some topographical issues with that. That would be, you know, so, the next stage in this process, assuming this conditional use is approved by council, would be the plating process. The, the city would definitely like to see much fewer cul-de-sacs, and so we will go into more conversation with the developer at that time.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Amber, can we have a roll call vote?
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jager?
Yes.
Lazenby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item number twenty-one, Jackie Lewis Sign World, PL 2021-00351, Mr. Kip.
Yes, sir. This is a request to allow an expansion of a commercial support use for sign fabrication located at seventeen fifteen Opalaka Road. The surrounding zoning district is CRDS as well. You've got the mall property just behind it, some office uses next door. Essentially, what they're requesting to do is to remove an existing kind of opened, open-air type accessory structure. It's not an accessory, it is attached to the building, but it's not a, meant to be a permanent structure. Essentially, remove that structure and replace it with a fifty-by-fifty prefabricated and engineered building, where they'll be able to store, as well as put the signs together that they produce there. Staff recommends approval. It does meet our future land use plan, and we'll be working with the applicant on, you know, siding of the building, meeting all the setbacks, and any of those deficiencies. It's a little bit unusual property in that it is an older property, so some of the criteria may not be met now, but as I said, we'll work with the applicant at DRT to make sure everything is up to code. I don't know if the applicant is here. Oh, he is, and I'm also happy to answer any questions. Did not receive any calls or comments about it either.
Any comments, Mr. Lewis? Would you like to make any comments?
Sure.
At your pleasure.
My name is Jackie Lewis, seventeen fifteen Opalaka Road, over in Alabama. Logan's been working with me. Our, the building that we have in the back is just old, dilapidated. I mean, it's just kind of falling apart, and a lot of the equipment that we bought, the new equipment, we just don't have the place to put it. So, what we're proposing to do is build a, a new fabricated building, get rid of the old stuff, new electrical, and it's mainly just an assembly area. We're not tearing up any new ground or anything, we're just putting it right on top of where the other was, only we're coming in pouring new slabs, and it's just, we build a lot of monument signs around the United States. We have about a thousand locations in the US that we build signs for, and in Canada, and we mainly work with a lot of franchises and things like that, and we're just out of room. We're, we've kind of outgrown ourselves, and our business is bigger than we are.
Good problem to have.
It is. We've been very fortunate, and I am very blessed, and don't owe anything. Everything we have is paid for. We've been, God's been really, really good to us, and I'm very thankful, and, but the city's been working. In fact, the new signs that we have here, we built them for the city and everything too, and we're very grateful for that too. I just need more room. Actually, we're only adding about twelve-hundred-and-fifty more square feet, but we're tearing down the, the old structure and things like that, and Logan's been very helpful working with us, and I really appreciate that too.
Good. Thank you, sir.
Hopefully, this will be enough.
Yes. Well, that's another good problem to have. Okay, this requires a public hearing, so I'll open it at this time. Okay, uh, this requires a, a public hearing, so I'll open it at this time. Anybody would like to speak on this? All right, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Ask for motion, discussion.
Move to approve twenty twenty-one zero zero three five one. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Okay, we're on to uh, item number twenty-two, Project A. This is PL twenty twenty-one zero zero three seven eight. Um, Ms. Kennedy.
Yes, this is an application uh, for conditional use approval for a manufacturing use within the industrial district. And it's located at the Amer technology park west. As you know, any use within an industrial district becomes conditional. Um, so even though it is an industrial use, it is conditional. We have not received any comments on this request and no real issues came up in the review process. Um, so staff is recommending approval.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lewis?
Would you have to answer any questions?
All right, this requires a public hearing. Anyone would like to speak on this item, please come forward now. Seeing no one, close the public hearing. For a motion, discussion.
Motion move to approve uh, item twenty-two. Any other comments?
Second discussion.
I have a quick question. So the, the power easement having the parking under it is fine, right? Okay, got it. No structures.
Yes, no structures.
Got it.
Just parking. That's coordinated with them.
There was some question uh, about the number of parking spaces needing sixty and only forty-eight being provided. And have we adjusted that number or do they meet the parking requirements?
Um, so sixty came from our current estimate on the largest shift size. That's how parking for an industrial use is determined. Um, so their providing a forty-eight may just be a little bit more information and so we're going to work that out um, between the industrial development board.
Estimate the largest shift to be a little smaller so that the forty-eight matches?
Uh, it's going to be up to the actual developer to tell.
They ought to meet the parking requirements. However you get to that number, that's uh, up to y'alls.
They'll meet the parking requirement.
There's been a revised site plan as well, so I think that overall area of the building might have decreased some.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
All right.
It's a work in progress, but, but we will meet all parking requirements.
I'm sure you can work it out.
Okay, do we have a motion?
With a motion, yes, sir.
We already have a motion, second. Oh, I'm sorry. I was getting uh, entertained here for a minute. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. On to number twenty-three, uh, AC DI Business Center Conditional Use. Uh, PL twenty twenty-one zero zero three seven nine. Ms. Kennedy.
Yes, um, this comes another conditional use request within the industrial zoning district. As you can see here, um, the location is off Pumphrey Avenue. The requested use is actually a current use in several other buildings on the property. Um, as you can see here, um, there's some light manufacturing in the building towards the um, north. And the other two are currently also being used as office buildings, which is what this request is for. Um, this request is for the newer building, kind of in the center there. We've not received any correspondence on this. Um, there are no other issues. And there's also a comment about parking that we're going to make sure to get resolved um, before anything, but staff is recommending approval.
And you'll meet the parking requirements?
They'll meet the parking requirement.
As appropriate. All right, this requires a public hearing. Anyone would like to speak on this item, please come forward now. Seeing no one, close that public hearing. Ask for a motion and a discussion.
Move to approve item twenty-three with condition of parking requirements to be met.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Okay, so we said that twenty-four was withdrawn, right? Okay, so we want to deal with that. And that brings us to the last item, which is the tracks. This is PL twenty twenty-one zero zero three seven four. Uh, Ms. Reese will recuse herself from this discussion. And Ms. Kennedy.
Yes, this is a um, waiver request from Phelps Gamble. Um, the waiver is to the minimum ground story height in the urban neighborhood west, um, which as you can see, the property is in that zoning district. Um, the request is to the ground story height requirement of fifteen feet uh, to allow a ground story to be nine feet, six inches. And to the second story height requirement um, of ten feet to allow, or ten and a half feet, excuse me, um, to allow that story to be nine and a half feet as well. And to the third story height requirement of ten and a half feet to allow the third story of the building to be eight and a half feet. These, yes, sorry. Um, this is an architectural rendering of the front elevation of the building. These requirements came about in the most recently adopted downtown design um, standards revisions that it came through. Um, you all and city council, it was passed by city council in May at their eighteenth meeting. Um, these requirements are only for the structures that face main, um, face Glen. Um, the main correspondence we've heard, uh, you also heard tonight during citizens communication. Um, just, I think in a general maybe misunderstanding or dislike of the new standards that were passed. Um, so I would like to clarify that the area was not rezoned at the time. It is still the urban neighborhood west and these are just design standards that were vetted by the DDRC, which is formed by city council and various architects and developers and builders prior to coming to planning commission and city council. Staff is recommending denial, seeing as um, the extensive research and vetting that these standards went through.
Okay, thank you. Um, out of curiosity, we don't have a public hearing on this.
It's not a far, it's a request for a waiver, but.
Waivers do not require public hearing?
Public hearing.
They're usually part of another.
Right, we say very rarely where they're individual.
Okay. Okay, well, in that case, uh, let's have a motion and we can have discussion.
Do we have an opportunity to hear from the applicant?
Sure, absolutely.
Is there an applicant?
Absolutely.
Okay.
But I also have lots and lots of questions.
My name is Phelps Gamble and I'm the developer of this project. And I, uh, just to kind of start this off, I started this project about eight or nine months ago. I first sent an email to Logan in December of last year. I went to school here. I was in Greek life here. I played football here. And the, the project that I put together was specifically designed similar to Mr. Castaban's properties and similar to other properties in the area that these students don't really want, these massive apartment complexes. Uh, they want individualized houses and we did this on this property. Fully designed it. We had a pre-development meeting on March twelfth with five city staff and everybody talked about it, loved the project. I had uh, my architects send me immediate um, preliminary designs shortly after that. I sent, I sent it out for bid, have investors lined up. I'm under contract on all these properties with a lot at stake here and I just don't understand where this really came from. There's no commercial in that area. A fifteen-foot ground floor height just doesn't seem very reasonable. I'm very willing to work with the, the nine feet, even going up to ten feet or something of that nature. But in that area, there just isn't any commercial. There's nothing down there besides the union that was just built that has a fifteen-foot ground floor. And I just, I just truly believe that this project is something that the city needs more of when you see these uh, houses that students want to live. They have no vacancies, none. And then like the, the university just made a deal with American Campus Communities right there to do on-campus housing when it's not on campus. And so these, these apartment complexes are flooded with vacancies and it's not what the university needs and they need more stuff like this. So, I'll leave it to Parker after that.
Hey, Parker Lewis, Hydro Engineering Solutions, seventeen East Sanford. Um, I told Phelps, I said, this is tough. I said, we, we've just been through this whole process as a city. A lot of time went into all of this. I said, let's just go and see what we can do. So I, 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 I get where we're coming from as a city. I get the position that you're in. It's tough to give a waiver on something we just approved. I think it's very important, and we've heard it already tonight, one of the points I wanted to make, we've seen it already on other projects, the one on Glen. If you look at this new ordinance or these new design changes, a lot of product types are waived out of this, right? Fee simple houses, townhomes, twin homes, duplexes, all of those things are waived. But to be in that waiver category, you've got to be a fee simple product. The only reason this is not a fee simple product is because it's one lot of record. So if you drive down the street, everything about this looks like a townhome. It, it, it's what it is as a townhome. It's just that as a city, we say because we don't have a fee simple lot, this is not a townhome product. It's a multi-unit product. So we lump this architecture into sort of an apartment complex mindset. And it's unfortunate. So if you look at this property, and you can kind of see it on your screen, if you look at the frontage that you have along Glen and then you have this frontage along railroad, one, I do want to clarify, two, is, is it only the frontage that requires fifteen feet? Or is it the entire zone, the entire urban neighborhood west zone, regardless of what street you're on or whether you're internal in a property or, I'm a little confused about that.
I don't know the answer to that.
Cause, so like if you look at this, my question would be, we've got four, we've got two buildings of four on Glen and then we have two buildings of five off the prop, you know, that are on, on the right of way. I mean, they're, they're a butt railroad. But, so the question would be, would we only have to do fifteen feet on rail, I mean, on Glen, but not have to do fifteen feet in the heart of the property? That's one question. So I should have covered that first. But then I, I think the larger picture for us as a city, regardless of what gets decided tonight, and I know this doesn't help Phelps, but I really do think we need to, all of our ordinance is built around product type. If you, if, if you look at, there's, there's different standards for setbacks and buffer yards and all of the things for a single-family house versus a twin house versus a duplex versus a um, cottage versus an ADDU. So we, we do everything based on product type and then all of a sudden we get to an, if we get an odd piece of property like we've got here or like we've got on Glen, where you've got this really deep product, property, because we don't allow private roads or because we don't allow alleys to count as right-of-way, we're forced to have, to automatically jump into multi-family, multi-unit. So I really do think there's a justification because of this being a, a townhome product, there is a justification, I think, that it could be looked at in that same sort of waiver from these design standards as if it was a townhome fee simple. So, be happy to answer any questions. Again, I know this is a tough spot. This is right out of the chute and we're here for a waiver. I completely get it. It's just, I'll be honest, and I reviewed these things, just like you guys did. I just missed that we were talking about all of this west of Donahue, which has, in the existence of urban neighborhood west, west of Donahue has been different than east of Donahue. And so I just quite frankly missed that we were saying everything along the street in Donahue, west of Donahue had to be eighteen feet commercial or fifteen feet residential.
There were three different kind of districts, if you will, that they laid out.
Right.
ABC and.
Again, be happy to answer any questions. I know this is, I know this is tough and I know that we don't, we don't set precedents, but I, I do think, I do think we have an argument here. When I say we, I say we, considering that, that this is a townhouse product type. It's just that the ownership is going to be condo as opposed to fee simple. So, be happy to answer any questions.
Can we answer that question? Um, about the fifteen feet first floor only on frontage of Glen as opposed to, you know, interior of, to the property?
I believe it is the intent to be the frontages. Now.
That would make sense.
Railroad Avenue is also a street frontage, but those buildings are not fronting. So it would not apply to those two.
That's the way I understood.
And I will say that with the changes of the design standards, previously we had required some areas have commercial on the first floor and when these changes, we allowed residential on the first. Now, this was in an area that previously did not require commercial on the first floor.
Well now, so did the change include that? Cause I, as I recall, the.
No, that was removed. We are still not requiring commercial on the first floor, but we are requiring the.
Fifteen foot.
Correct. And residential would require the fifteen feet.
But not all residential, just certain categories of residential.
That is correct. Had this been townhouses, no townhouses would require, but twin houses, um.
Townhouses do require fifteen feet?
Correct.
Fee simple townhomes?
Yes.
I think townhouses are exempt.
They are not.
Yeah, we checked. Um, in some of the other districts, I believe they may be exempt. One of the, the fifteen foot came from a compromise between wanting, and Parker's absolutely right. We review this, we, we review this property as being a private dormitory. Now, whether that is they build every square foot of the property vertically or whether it's in this format that looks a lot different, the regulations that were passed in vi, you know, were specifically targeting um, full property development, vertical development. So that was kind of where the fifteen foot or eighteen foot, having a larger ground story height and upper story heights makes it more consistent with an urban environment, like you see downtown where the majority of the buildings are those full vertical uh, built-out sites with larger um, eve heights. In this case, like I said, Parker's right. It, it's hard to, our zoning ordinance will classify this as private dormitory and um, I think we still want to see that consistency of fifteen feet as these properties develop. I think a larger, then the DDR, DDRC expressed a desire to have larger ground story heights um, as properties redevelop along Glen. So that's, that's kind of where our position stands.
You going to make a comment, Mr. Gamble?
I was, thank you.
Did, could I have that?
Yeah. Is there a clicker in there? Thank you very much. Okay, so obviously that's the beginning. So this is a job that Tucker Brown did on Miller and Armstrong. And so I actually talked to Tucker about this and I've, I've got his dimensions and I, I'm pretty much copying what Tucker did. And he did that on Armstrong and Miller right behind a five-story condo. And it looks great. It, it fits in with the area and so I wanted to copy that. That is how it looks currently. So there's a red brick house to the left of the project and then there's a, a house that's been boarded up for some odd years to the right of it. And then on either side of those and on the railroad side, there's single-family detached houses. And including the, the hollers that you heard from earlier, they have a lot in the dead center of my project. the dead center of my project and they have their game day house there. And before I even did anything, they were the first people I tried to get in touch with. They came down to the planning commission meeting, there were other people here looking to hear and the first thing people asked when we were, we were combining these lots was what was I going to put there? Is this going to be another one of those big apartment complexes? Is this going to be one of those buildings downtown that have these retail spots that aren't being leased? Is, is it not going to fit into the neighborhood? And so I, we took a lot of time and a lot of effort, it went into designing to make sure the parking fit and keeping it as a, looking as a house, a craftsman-style house that fits into the neighborhood. And, and this will kind of, this is a pretty bad Photoshop job, but it kind of shows how, how, how it would look. And it, 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 it does fit in well with the neighborhood and it, I just, I, I, the 15-foot just caught me completely off-guard because I've been working on this for seven, eight months now and four weeks after we get preliminary proud approval and contractors have been bidding on it for months now and they, this comes out of nowhere to me and to all of the people I've been working with on it. So, I wanted to express my concern for that and hopefully we can go somewhere with it. Thank you.
And real quick, I, I do have to apologize, Katie's exactly right, I, I read townhome when it says twin home. It's, it's basically, single-family detached, zero lot line, twin house, duplex, cottage housing and ADDU are exempt from these standards. So I guess townhouse, I, I misspoke, you're exactly right, I, I read townhouse when I saw twin house, so just wanted to clarify.
You'll learn, she's usually right. Let me, let me ask her this, this is a...
I'm sorry, I have a question.
This goes, what we do is a recommendation to the council, Alaya, are we the final?
You are the final approver of this one.
Thank you.
Did you just say that ADDU is exempt from these standards? Did, did somebody not say that these are ADDUs?
They're private dormitories.
Private dormitories, if they're attached as private dormitories.
Sorry, because of, sorry. Because they're, because of our definitions.
Well, had they really been fee simple townhouses, they would still be considered private dormitories.
And that's what I mean when I say that. I do have a couple of comments and y'all, some of y'all won't agree with me, but if you'll just hold your interjections until I can get through my thoughts. My initial reaction at packet meeting was to deny this waiver request because we did just put these standards into place and that was a very long and arduous and tiring and drawn-out project that included lots of different things. And I have spent a lot of time the past couple of days looking at this particular item. One, because I didn't realize how far down Glen we were talking about originally with this, with this application, I honestly thought it was a little closer into the urban core. We spent a lot of time talking about those downtown design changes with respect to five, six-story buildings, 200, 300 feet in length and so that, you know, to me that was our main focus. Doesn't mean that we didn't change some other things, maybe unintentionally with, with what, what some of our decisions were, the fact that we have to lump a product like this in with those other multifamily products is, we can't address it right now, but I feel it's important that at some point along the way we address, address that because they are not the same product. And so I think somewhere along the way, we have to deal with this. I think it's unfortunate that a smaller developer will suffer more than a larger developer because of, because they're being treated on an equal playing field. And so I've spent a lot of time thinking about it and I don't like to go against the rules, but I do think that they are entitled to this waiver, one, because they've worked on this project for months and, and worked with the city for a long time to try and get this in place and we did just pass these new standards. And I think that at some point we may need to look at the, the area scope of those standards and see if it needs to be pulled back a little bit more towards the urban core on some of these, I mean, a 15, I, I don't know any houses in Auburn that have 15-foot ceilings. I mean, that's very, and that's very high and I totally get it in an urban core and an urban environment. I don't know that a, a 15-foot first floor 10 or whatever it is on the second, third, those, but those structures are really going to dwarf whatever is around it. And a lot of that is, it's going to slow down to me, redevelopment of distressed structures. What's across the street from it isn't going anywhere anytime soon because those are all condos and someone's going to have to purchase every single condo in every single unit before those can be redeveloped. So we're not talking about five years, we're talking about 10, 15, 20 years before everything else around it's even going to match this. So I, I think they deserve this waiver and then I think we need to take another really hard lens look at some of the design standards for the urban neighborhoods. I think what we did in the core and what we did in the college's overlay was, is great and I think that that's what that presentation lent itself towards. What I think we're seeing here is a potential unintended consequence of that. When I drive by a building, I don't care really how high the ceiling is inside of it, what I'm more concerned with is what it looks like on the outside. I don't live in it, I don't go in it. I want it to look nice and I want it to, to fit within the scope of the neighborhood. And I think that what they've presented does and some people may not agree with me, but I think that, I think they're getting caught in the crossfire in planning their project and then the new design standards being put in place.
Can I ask a question? So as it stands right now, we think that the two buildings that front Glen, those will have to be 15 feet, but the rest of the buildings don't necessarily, right?
Correct.
They can be.
And it's just to, to clarify, it's a visual story height, not the interior.
Not the interior, the visual.
Correct.
Well, I can't believe I'm saying some of this too in the fact that I have seen a lot of times proposals that are submitted that don't meet our standards and they're looking for ways around what, what we have worked hard to put in place. However, in this particular case, if I looked at that aerial of the entire street or you drive down it, this is, this, this is sort of the first end on that side of the, side of the street. And I really don't think that the 15-foot ceiling would have any, or lesser, less than 15-foot ceiling would have any negative effect on the project. I'm also sympathetic, although legally, since he hadn't done his papers in, he has to follow the rules that are passed, but there have been in times in this city where projects had been planned, but they didn't get things all squared away before we put in place some new standards. And so the projects were faced with either being cast aside or us allowing some overlap in time. And I think in this case, this is just a matter of, of bad timing. And I don't like, you know, messing with the standards that we worked so hard to put in place, however, I'm not sure that applying those to a project of this type is, is, is reasonable either. So I, I'm, I'm leaning toward granting the waivers.
So I, I've been trying to rack my brain to try to figure out how, what makes sense to grant the waiver and it's, I'm having a hard time, but I guess, so I guess, you know, a lot of this stuff happened during the pandemic and whatnot and this was a once-in-a-lifetime type thing that happened and this and that, you know, so maybe that kind of held, could have held up the process and whatnot, who's to say, you know, that kind of thing, but I think just I missed it and, you know, we worked hard on it is not a good reason, in my opinion. Now, if we want to make an exception because of how extraordinary the times were where this was going on, then maybe I could, you know, I could sign on to that, but just so far, it's just not all that persuasive from what I heard so far as far as approving the waiver, but.
All right, let's, we've got a little section here, Glen, but you go back to the east and you run into all, to what the standards were set for. And if you go to the west, to the end, you've got the same large student rental building, I forget the name of it, Union or something down on the end. So from a long-range planning standpoint, all of this is going to be a urban area. It already goes to the end with, with the, with the large building there and Jen, I'm, don't disagree with a thing that you've said and I think it would be very nice to grant the waiver, but when you sit on the commission, sometimes it's not necessarily the nice thing that you do, but the thing that you do for your responsibility and a lot of people have worked on this standard and I would, I could not in clear conscience from what we've done in the past, vote to approve the waiver and I, I'm sorry for the work you've put in, but that, we're dealing in the real world and...
Well, I guess we ought to get a motion on the table.
I thought we had one.
At least, no, we don't.
Sorry, I'll move to approve PL 2021-00374.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to...
Now, did you, did you move to approve it?
No, no, prove the waiver.
Move to approve.
Prove the waiver.
The waiver.
We don't move to deny, we move to approve.
That's what I'm saying, you...
We are move...
I'm moving to approve the waiver.
Right.
With the expectation that people would vote against it to deny?
If you don't want to approve it.
I mean, that's the process we're dealing with.
That's up to you.
Exactly right.
That's up to you, up to the individual.
Oh, okay. I'm just trying to find the intent of...
I guess they're proving...
Your thought when you made the motion.
If you vote yes, you're granting, if you vote no, you're denying.
Okay, so we still, we done with discussion? Are we ready for a vote on that?
I got clarification. Are you saying that there is a structure further, further west that already meets the 15-foot?
Yes. I don't know about the 15-foot, but it's one of those tall buildings that's right up against the right-of-way that's...
The Union Development is to the west of this property. It is a sing, it's a primarily single structure, private dorm and more, which is part of the, part of the motivation for staff to apply these kinds of requirements to the urban neighborhoods based on the redevelopment that's currently going on. So the, so the 15-foot requirement in this neighborhood for these types of products is not an unintended consequence, this was something that was debated several times.
My issue with it is comparing this project to a project like the Union. To me, they are not the same product type and should not be treated the same.
But we don't have a...
But there are other places this product type could be placed.
That is my argument for granting the wa, for wanting to grant the waiver.
Can I add one thing?
Now, we're gonna, we're in, we have a motion on the table, we're gonna deliberate and vote. Sorry about that. Okay, further discussion. The motion is to approve the waiver. So let's have a roll call vote, please.
Bridges? Yes. Chancellor?
No.
Jager?
Yes.
Blasenby?
No.
Marshall?
No.
Hord?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I missed that. Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
No.
4-4.
4-4? So that means the motion carries, right?
No.
That's for subdivision, I'm sorry. Okay, motion fails. So the waiver is denied. Okay, that brings us to the end of our meeting. Is there anything from staff that you want to share with us?
No, sir, I have no correspondence this evening.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, do you think we might need a work session on a couple of those proposals that we put, that we postponed?
I think that's an order because it's going to be worthwhile for us to give a little more information on that.
I think so, there's a lot of things to discuss.
Can we wait till the council votes on the two?
Yes, I'd like to see that, absolutely.
When is, when will it reach the, the council?
It will go to council on the 12th of August, I believe.
Which is...
12th of August.
That's our day.
That's our day. Oh, you're not talking about the Highway 280?
When does the 280 corridor go before city council? You said it was the second meeting of August, right?
I'm sorry, 17th.
17th of August.
So the bottles coming back before us.
Of August. And yet we postponed, but, but one of those was postponed till...
That is correct, so it would probably have to be extended.
We had talked about that at the beginning anyway.
That is correct, correct.
But that was because it was a request by the applicant.
The applicant.
Okay, so you were going to ask another question?
If it's appropriate, I ask you where the city may be about either pointing our stand in director to be the director or whether we're going to, where they, where they are, we've heard nothing. It's kind of like, I feel like we've been left in the dark for seven or eight months and haven't heard anything from anybody and could you give us a kind of clue of what the status is?
I will let the executive director of Development Services respond to that question.
I mean, all we can say at this point, the, the director, department head positions are, are hired by the city manager and when the city manager is prepared to make that announcement, she will do so and that's, that's all we can share at this point.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, I call the meeting adjourned.
Thank you.